Welcome, everybody, to the virtual February 10th Lewisboro Library trustee meeting called to order at 7:36. Do we have any members of the public who would like to make a comment? No. Okay, then we will move on to approving our minutes. Were there any changes or corrections?
No, I thought they were great.
Elena, you do such a- Elena, I just had one question. Was Rich there at the January meeting? I thought December was his last.
No, he wasn't in the beginning. He was-
I think he was still in January because, right, we didn't switch him over until the end of January.
He was there. He was there, yep.
All right, good. That was my only question. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Make the motion. Elena, you do such a good job with them. Thank you so much.
A second?
Yep.
Okay, who's that? I don't know.
Linda.
Okay, thank you, Linda, for seconding. All in favor of approving the minutes as written?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, motion is carried, minutes are approved. Let's move on to Kevin and the financial report.
Just to let you know Jay is joining us now.
Oh, good. Excellent.
Yay. Let's see.
Oh, there he is.
Hey, Jay.
The gang's all here.
Kevin, you want the balance sheet or the other one first?
Just the income statement, year, month, a month. It'll be quick.
Okay. Right, this one?
Yes. So I'll start with the funding part. You can see compared to January last year, bottom line there, total funding, $127 increase. We've had a jump up in gifts and contributions. Last year, we had the large grant of almost $14,000. Hopefully, there's some grants in the pike, but that's the main variation that kind of offsetting with it. If you move down to the expenses, you can see the the big drop off in expense is the salaries and benefits, and that has to do with the number of payroll weeks in the month. Last month, we had an extra one. This month, we have less, so you're seeing the decline there of $14,000. And you'll see most of the variations are negative. A lot of it has to do with timing. Some of the expenses were paid in the latter week of December, or they're going to be paid next month. So it's mostly all timing, not really much to focus on this month. And you go all the way down to get the bottom line. Almost $20,000 profit compared to $4,000 negative last year. Again, it's the payroll weeks and the timing of expenses. Really not much to talk about this month. If there's no questions, move on to the balance sheet. Okay, I guess we can go all the way down to the bottom line, not getting into the details. Eight eighty-one, we're up to 893,000 this month. A lot of it has to do with the money that came in in January with the less expenses driving it. The investment fund at UBS went down a few thousand dollars from December. I'm sorry, I should have said it before. This is this comparison is to December 2020. Uh, that has to do with the market fluctuations, and when you look at the at the value of the portfolio. But basically, we're still doing well with that portfolio, mainly because the market's doing well, and it reflects the market. So it's not really much activity this month to talk about. And is that long enough for everybody, or should I get into more detail?
Just a question, Kevin. I don't know if it was on the prior screen. I missed it. Does it show the actual dollar amount that was moved for the pension obligation?
Uh, no, that's an accrual. When that is resolved, we'll reverse the accrual and put in the actual expense. But right now, that is still an open item.
Okay.
To be resolved. Any other questions? Okay, I guess I'm done.
Good job, Kevin.
Money man, the money man.
Oh, hi, Kevin. Hi.
You have a question for Kevin?
Yes, I'm just I'm just looking over some of the emails back and forth between you and my husband, Chris McElroy. So I was just wondering, what is going to happen regarding the pension plan that seemed to be non-existent? I just always think about potential liabilities down the line. What what could be done to prevent that? Or are we going to get in touch with an employee benefits attorney to to fix and straighten out whatever has occurred?
Well, the intention right now is we're going to look to see, to get some guidance from an attorney, because we don't want to make a move that is not correct. We have the money set aside. We've established accrual on the books. So that is-
That, yes.
Let me finish. And we're going to pursue that and, you know, talk to an attorney as soon as we get one. And so we make the right move.
Great.
We financially, we can do it right now, but I don't know if that's the correct way to do it. And the second step there is to find a new pension fund, since we've had bad experience with the existing one, and then move whatever funds there over as well as the new hire, put them on board too. But right now, we're we're kind of struggling to make sure we make the right move.
Okay. Just so I know, do you need a referral for an attorney, or are you sat with an employee benefits person?
I know Nancy's been looking, talking to, trying to get one, but we could definitely use referrals. Because we don't want to make the wrong move. We just want to do it correctly, get it behind us.
Okay.
That was a, that kind of discussion I thought was going to occur later on with the personnel committee slash finance committee with the update. So have we have we covered all the bases that, like, on that topic now, or will we continue later on in the-
Well, I want to point out that the committee has not met yet. So-
Yes.
My focus was making sure that the money is set aside for the employees, and we have done that. And now it's to make sure that-
Kevin, we have money. We have money.
Well, it's money that always belonged to them, so it's it's theirs. And we set that aside, we identified the dollars, and now take the correct approach and do this right.
Great. And I'm sorry if that was if that question wasn't pertinent to to this part of the conversation, if it had to do with another committee. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I would assume the committee is going to look at new companies as far as investing the pension fund, and that's probably the personnel committees will make that call.
Got it. Thank you.
Nancy dropped off. I don't see her.
Uh-oh.
Just saying.
Uh, let me look at the gallery view.
I was getting a warning about low bandwidth, and I almost thought I lost you.
I don't see her, and she's not waiting to come in. Thanks. Gosh.
She said she wanted to keep it a short meeting.
That's one way of doing it.
Motion to adjourn at 7:46.
I mean, I could go on with my report, but I helped to-
Want to give her a few minutes at least? You know, she's very diligent. I imagine she's trying to get back in.
Sure.
Where is she right now? Is she down in Florida?
No, she's home. I'll try texting her.
And it's, let's see, it's not Florida. Where should we move to?
Can I pose a question to you?
You're South Carolina, yeah.
Kevin? Kevin, as far as the pension goes, you know, is there, is, I assume time is some type of factor. But are we under pressure to get this done as soon as possible?
I would like to have had it done already. It's a learning curve. We're going up dealing with this topic, and we've had recommendations that we, just to make sure we go down the correct path, we get some legal guidance on it.
Yeah, hurry up, but take your time, right?
I'd rather see it in the rearview mirror.
Yeah, Hemingway had a great expression for that, and I forget exactly how it went, but it was something like that.
Oh, Jay, that's a tease.
And suddenly at the same time. Yeah.
Jay, Google. Google right now. That's such a tease.
Yeah, it's something like, it happened slowly and suddenly all at the same time, something like that. And that's what we needed to happen. Hey, Peter.
Hey. All right, I texted Nancy, but she hasn't answered. I'm not sure.
Should we do some of the other committee reports that aren't high on priority? To keep things moving?
Yeah, let's move. Let's move some stuff.
Cindy, want to start from the back of the list?
So I can just say nominating has nothing to report.
Oh, well, that's good.
That's one down.
If we're really moving-
Building and grounds doesn't have much to say either. We just got to watch those snow markers, Kevin. That's all, right?
It's in my frontview mirror.
Good. That's better.
Well, I can tell you something from my report that Nancy pretty much knows about, but we are eligible for and are applying for the second draw PPP Small Business Administration loan, which we successfully got last year and was forgiven. And so we will, we, let's see, we qualify by a 47% reduction in gross profit for the third quarter of 2020. You only have to have one quarter with reduced gross profit to be eligible.
Cindy, didn't you say that was because the town did not make their payment? We gave them a grace period, whatever else. Wasn't that the kicker?
That was part of it, but was also a quarter in which the library fair did not occur.
Okay.
So the application was submitted to the Capital One portal on Wednesday, February 3rd. They're asking for a little more documentation, which we are working on uploading. The amount of the loan will be 88,415. Oh, here's Nancy. Which is $215 more than the first one. The first one was 88,200. So I, you know, we are eligible, and I don't anticipate any problems with that as well.
What a gift.
Yeah, it will be very useful again this year. Really will help us out.
Cindy, in the event it's not forgiven, I know interest rates are ridiculously low, but what is determined the interest rate on that?
It's 1%.
That's beautiful.
And there's no way it will not be forgiven.
Yeah.
We qualify, we have all the documentation, and our loan is under 100,000, is under 100,000 to 150,000. And honestly, first of all, there's absolutely no problem. We're not making up any numbers. Everything is on the up and up. But believe me, they don't even audit the loans that are underneath below 100,000.
That's a scary thought.
They have so many thousands and thousands.
Yeah, the size of the numbers being thrown around these days. But, you know, Cindy, even if it wasn't forgiven at 1%, we're doing better. Kevin, we're doing better than that with our investments, right?
Market-driven. The-
Yeah, market-driven.
These are not earning that much, but they're earning something.
I would not apply if I thought that we couldn't be forgiven. That would not even be, I don't think it'd be worth doing. Nancy, I just, that's all I did. Do you want to, you want to go?
Sure. I'm sorry, I lost power here, and I'm now on generator, and there's no weather, and there's no-
Wow.
I'm hearing sirens in the background.
I am on generator power, so we'll hope I stay put.
It's like Lewisboro.
Right. This is North Salem, near Lewisboro. Okay, have you been through the director's report?
Only only the PPP part. You, so you can do yours, and I'll go, and then I'll-
No, keep going with the director's report. That's-
Oh, okay. I just talked about the PPP, just doubling back to the top. So as far as reopening, we are on, still on curbside, grab and go only. No patrons are allowed inside the building, only the staff, and we've been that way since the day after Thanksgiving. We're keeping an eye on the seven-day positivity rate in Westchester County, which was was, we wanted to be down to 3% before we open our doors to browsing by appointments, computers, study, children's room appointments. The current rate on February 8th for Westchester County was 6.62. It had gone down a couple of days before that, but it's gone right back up. The current cases in Lewisboro are 37, which is good, down from 73 three weeks ago. So that's that's a good thing. We just really need the Westchester County rate to sink a little bit lower. So we'll keep an eye on that. As soon as that happens, we'd be happy to open our doors. Technology-
I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Before we wrap up this portion of your report?
Yes.
Has Westchester Library System, have they given any new guidance about quarantining materials? At Lewisboro Library?
Yeah. What what we base it on, and actually, you know, we are a cooperative of 38 libraries, and it's all home rule. So every library decides for themselves what they're going to do. There was a survey again recently, and it's everywhere from three days quarantine to seven days quarantine. What we are basing that on, there was a library-related study done. It was the Realm Study, and I'm sorry, I cannot tell you what Realm stands for any longer. But they actually took library materials, a variety of them, which would include books with the plastic covers, DVDs, some things have met. Most of it was plastic-covered or metal-covered, and they put them in the bins or containers that, you know, they were contaminated with the COVID virus, and they put them in the bins or other containers, and then they tested them every day to see if the virus remained. And it took at least four days for the virus to disappear. So I know overall, there's less emphasis on the touching with the virus and more on the aerosol spreading, but we're trying to err on the side of caution. So all materials that enter the building, either they're returned, or they come in from the interlibrary loan bins, they're quarantined an hour building for four days. Then they're all labeled, and everything is labeled the day it comes in and the day it should be checked in. And also, we backdate five days just to be sure. So even though sometimes people return things on their record, and it, I mean, they've returned it to the library, but it still remains on their record for four days. And so we're very careful to explain to everybody who calls about that. And then when the material is backdated and checked in, any fines that accrued will be disappear.
Cindy, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Well, I just have a follow-up, Linda. I'm sorry. So I just need to point out that I guess I understand all of that, and I think in the beginning of this, it was important to quarantine, or quarantine items, because we we didn't know how the transmission was was happening. But I do question why it's still occurring, since as far as my understanding goes, that no one has caught the virus from materials. At least, that's my understanding. And the reason why I say this is because it's a long time for kids to wait for books to come in from other libraries. And I think for adults, we have patience, and it's okay. But for kids, it really, it turns into being a really long time waiting for those materials, not only to come in, but then to wait from quarantine. So I just hope maybe there's some wiggle room as we move forward.
Well, I do understand that, and we do, we are mindful of that, and we do feel badly, because we know people have to wait longer. But this was actually based on a scientific study that was done within the library industry, that things were tested, and particularly on shiny or plastic surfaces, which the books are. There was evidence on the first, second, third, just disappearing on the fourth day. So, you know, for the safety of the staff that have to do with hundreds and hundreds of items, at this point, I'm not willing to change that.
And again, I just want to make sure that that this, like, I understand the library did that study, and I don't know when they did that study. But I just hope that maybe there can be revisit that based on the science now.
But the science showed that the virus was still on the materials.
Right, but-
And I don't think that's going to change.
Is telling us that anyone has caught the virus from-
I don't think my staff would go for that. I'm sorry. You know, it's for their safety as well as-
Again-
And there's not a single library that is not quarantining the materials for at least three days. Some of them are doing it for seven.
And how long is Lewisboro doing?
Three, four, sorry, 72 hours. We actually mark the time it ends in the building, enters the building, and we know when the 72 hours, like, could be 1:00 PM or 4:00 PM, and then we check them in.
So Cindy, here's a question about the reopening phase, and not that I question your good judgment, just more out of curiosity. Since we primarily serve Lewisboro and Lewisboro citizens, I wondered why we're waiting for Westchester County COVID percentage results to drop below 3% when Westchester has some hotspots like, I guess, Poughkeepsie, or White Plains, or Porchester. But Lewisboro's rates of COVID seem to be on the decline. We're probably well below 3%. Or is this a county mandate that we can only, or we shouldn't even consider reopening for in-person service until the county percentage drops?
Well, first of all, we don't know, we know the number of cases in Lewisboro, but we actually don't know the positivity rate, because the positivity rate is based on the number of people that are tested, and then the number of people that are tested positive. So it's a percentage of the number of people that have tested, and Westchester County or the Department of Health doesn't release that information for the individual towns.
That answers that, yeah.
I mean, they definitely did for the communities that were in yellow or orange. So I agree with you. I mean, I see the number of cases going down, but we don't know the positivity rate. And my feeling also is there's no magic shield around Lewisboro, you know, to have somebody just visiting or, you know, coming from another community. So I mean, we might consider if it gets down, maybe not waiting till 3%, but I really, in the county, I would hope that it would go down further than it is.
Yeah, thank you for that information, Cindy.
And the 3% came from where? Who decided? Is that a county?
Well, when when all of this began, you know, 3%, if you, I don't quote me exactly, but related to the number of people that, you know, a number of positive cases that you had, and how many people it could could spread the disease, you know, I'm sorry, it's been a long time since last spring. But that was, you know, before Governor Cuomo began, and, you know, New York City, before they changed their approach to the hotspots. It was looking at the positivity rate period, and I think that the positivity relates to, if you've got two people that have the disease, they spread it to maybe two other people. There was some sort of formula like that. So the more people that have it, it, you know, progressively increases some.
I'd be curious to just bring it down really closely for our library. Can't wait to hear from the, certainly the teen librarian, you know, to find out what happens. I mean, how soon there could be some interaction with the teens and the library and, you know, and so forth. You know, the children secondary. But from everything you're hearing now in the news, whatever else, students are struggling. Not that it makes it any better for a six-year-old versus a 12-year-old. So I'm looking forward to their input.
Well, you know, keep in mind, we do have virtual programs. For example, and last night, our teen librarian Jane Rothschild had a book club that was very successful with them. And also, I was going to talk about in the programming section that we, Dolores Antonetts, had started the great tradition of an adventure hike outside. And Jane Rothschild had picked up on that. That's in conjunction with the Lewisboro Land Trust.
For the Brownell.
Yes, on Monday, President's Day, they were planning on having that hike, and already had, I don't know, at least 12, 15 teens signed up for it. Unfortunately, because there's so much snow and the bridges are icy, that's been postponed. But so you see that we are trying to, you know, that was an outdoor program that we had planned, which is hard to do this time of year. But any other questions about that? Um, let's see. So we will open as soon as we can. You know, we miss our patrons, but I have to say, they're all very happy with the grab and go as well. So even if we reopen, same thing as before, when we were having appointments, a lot of people stuck with the grab and go rather than come inside. Um, so technology, WLS Services. There is a group of about 10 libraries in the Westchester Library System that are pursuing breaking away from the Westchester Library System IT services and contracting out for their own IT services within their own library, except for participating in and funding the inter, the Integrated Library System software, which is the online catalog and the circulation system. It's a time of, could you mute? Do you mind, Kelly?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Oops.
It's a time of great change for the Westchester Library System IT, which underwent an audit last year. They're in the process of reorganizing the department and will be offering IT services on more of an à la carte basis in response to what's going on with this group of other libraries. I mean, there are still 28 libraries that still want to receive these services from WLS, depending on what's being offered and what the price will be. It remains to be seen how it will affect our library and the fees we will be paying to WLS in the future. So this is still playing out, and we don't have the data we need about that yet, but they are actively working on how that services to be offered will be changed. Any questions about that? And last, I just want to call your attention to the great programming we're having, coming up. We've got a great varied slate of adult programs, and I particularly want to call your attention to the browsing through history, the story of our library by our town historian Maureen Cole. That will happen on Sunday, February 21st at 4:00 PM, and you can sign up for that on our website through the calendar. On February 24th, Wednesday at 7:00, the Lenape Center of the Indigenous Tribe will discuss their work and history. This was the Native American tribe that originally was in New York State and was forced out. So that will be an interesting program. On March 7th, Sunday, 4:00 PM, the History of Slavery in Lewisboro, also Maureen Cole. March 23rd, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, Navigating the College Admissions Process During COVID. We have offered this several times already and continues to be very popular. And the reason why we continue to offer it, because things keep on changing with the colleges. Another very popular one on March 25th, Thursday, 7:00 PM, Birding 101, which will be offered by someone from the Sawmill River Audubon Club. That will be a joint meeting with the Bedford Village and North Sanlon Libraries. We already, between the three libraries, have 75 people signed up for that. And April 1st, Ungardening, How to Build Your Yard's Connection with Nature, sponsored by the Lewisboro Garden Club. On the teen side, I mentioned the adventure hike at the Brownell Preserve. Jane Rothschild, our teen librarian, had that all set to go, but it will be postponed because of the snowy conditions. She's trying out crafts for teens by offering craft kits on a grab-and-go basis. Her first craft for Valentine's Day, paper fortune cookies with positive messages inside to share with family and friends. So if you know a teen, sixth grade and up, that would be interested in that, they can come pick up the kit to do that. And she's working on those, and I think will be a great thing to involve the children. And Maureen Ania, our children's librarian, is offering boredom buster activities every Friday at 4:00 PM. And Maureen Anya, our children's librarian, is offering boredom buster activities every Friday at four P M. Crafts and STEM activities in addition to her regular story hours. Any questions about any of the programming? You can sign up for any of these things on our website, lewisborolibrary.org, on the calendar. They're all virtual programs, except of course the hike. And that's all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you Cindy. I'm really looking forward to Maureen's talk on the history of the library. I think that's going to be a lot of fun and I'd like to really understand that myself. Moving on to the president's report, thank you for skipping over me and coming back to me. First, I want to thank everyone for, who participated in the annual meeting. I thought it flowed very well. If anything, we were over too quickly and we had to cue the speaker. So Martha Handler did a very nice job. I enjoyed her talk and we will be giving her the complimentary wine basket. Next, as you know, I am leaving the presidency, although I will be here for the wine tasting and maybe the March meeting. I do, I do plan to be here for that. But I am looking for somebody to step forward and assume the leadership after I leave. And if you would like to talk with me privately about the duties, the responsibilities, the time commitment. I would be happy to do that with you offline or over a coffee or on a phone call. So any one of you I know has the leadership skills and the abilities. So somebody please step forward. Thank you. I had talked a little bit about with Cindy about whether we should try to establish some goals. I think those of you who know me know I'm, I'm big on having goals to work toward during the year. It's been a little bit of a Nazi year. So I don't know if we want to really move forward with that. I'll briefly review our goals that we worked on for twenty-twenty. And we didn't do badly on them, I have to say. Our first goal was to build and maintain a closer relationship with the town government. I think we've done that by sharing each other's community announcements, by staying close with the town board. Certainly it helps to have Richard, our former trustee, now a member of the town board. And Cindy and I pushed to get at least a little bit of a budget increase. Which I think was remarkable that, that Cindy actually got that to compensate for our forced minimum wage hikes. So I, I think we've worked on that goal quite successfully. Our second goal for twenty-twenty was to focus on recognizing and cultivating donors. And I think that's been most successful and I really give kudos to Linda Press Wolf. I think that's worked amazingly well and I'm not saying it was the outreach or the thank you letters. But we certainly have had a fantastic year for donors and, and for giving. In spite of the pandemic and, and the mail problems that we had with our annual appeal. I, I thank you Linda for pushing us in that direction. We have gotten some fantastic donations this year.
My pleasure.
Our third goal was to connect with K L S D to foster library and district programming and communication. A small group of us had met with the superintendent of schools over the summer. It was a little shock to see us. We had a very meaningful dialogue. And we were in the process of putting together that miniature golf fundraiser. With Elena as the interface between K L S D and the library. Made some wonderful faculty connections over there. Students were designing the little golf obstacles. With moving parts and we were going to go ahead with that and then COVID shut the whole thing down last spring. So I, I, I would give us a B plus. Definitely. We did as much as we could. Given the strange circumstances surrounding twenty-twenty.
A for effort, I would give us.
Yeah, I, I think we did pretty well, all things considered. For twenty-twenty-one, I, I think one of our goals has got to be to resolve the pension issues. As, as you know, by way of background, MetLife, our current pension fund is not accepting any new members from New York State. Which leaves poor Marie without a pension plan. Although we, we are aware and calculating what she is owed and she will be made whole. Secondarily, we are trying to compensate to former or one former and one present employee. Whose pension funds were not fully funded. So Kevin and I have been working very hard on that issue. That will be the top of the list and we are working diligently to get legal advice. When we are ready to look and examine new plans, that's when I'd like to bring in the personnel and finance committees. To have their say, to help us interview, decide, determine. But for right now, things are, you know, complex enough that Kevin, Cindy and I are handling that. So that's my recommendation. I really have no, no right to, you know, suggest or encourage any other goals. I will put on my departing president's hat and say, I hope that we can go forward with a library fair this year. The funds that it raises are really crucial. And will, with the PPP, put us in a much better position going forward. So that we can again finish the year in the black, which is always nice for a nonprofit to do. That call has to be made, you know, help me out Cindy, by the beginning of the summer. And I think it will depend very much on the distribution of the vaccine and the percentage of the population that has been vaccinated. We may well have to work on encouraging younger volunteers to get involved and teens and their children. Because some of the older, more immunocompromised volunteers may not be coming forward. Cindy, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that. The Jewish holidays seem to fall early this year, so that is in our favor. When would you have to make a call on that?
Well, I would, I would say at the very least that by the next meeting, we should choose the date. Unless you want to choose it tonight, only to get it on the calendar because as things clear up. Parks and Rec will be getting requests probably for soccer tournaments and they may be thinking about what they're going to do in the fall as well. So it's best to establish our date, no matter what's going to happen and get it on the calendar. But yes, I would say, yeah, without younger volunteers, we're going to have a problem.
But you would like to see it go forward, wouldn't you?
Oh, absolutely. If we could make it happen. If, if we don't, we're going to have to find some other big fundraiser, you know, without the library fair. And the huge infusion of cash profit that it brings in, in the last quarter of the year, as you know. We've been bringing in in the neighborhood of forty-something dollars a year for the past few years. That, that's a big chunk out of our budget. So if we don't have the library fair, we're going to have to think of a bunch of, you know, quarterly things that bring in to match that amount or some other big event.
Um, Cindy, what do you think about as far as looking towards the, you know, the youth, the younger for the, the volunteers? I would wonder whether or not the, the last year of totally not being able to do anything. Whether we would have like an influx of like hundreds of young adults and kids who want to do something. That's, that's pre-planned, you know, that all the rules are set forth, whatever else, and it, and it's finite. It's from next start here and there. And fairly well supervised depending upon what, you know, what's chosen. That, that might be our only positive in a, in volunteer aspect for the fair.
Well, I, I think they'll definitely will be, can you hear me? Okay, um, I think that's a great point, Colleen. I think there'll be a lot of pent-up. Desire or demand for people to volunteer and get out there and do something for good, you know, after everything we've experienced this past year. But I think what Nancy is also referring to is adults that are younger than in their seventies. You know, that can be chair people of the various areas.
Right.
So that's.
That's, that's what I meant when I was saying adults. I mean, well, young adults, meaning like sixteen, seventeen, young adults.
Right, but they're not going to be able to be in charge of the various areas. So that's more of a concern, I think, is getting adults, you know, that are in their thirties, forties, fifties to chair the various parts of the fair.
Right.
And also, I mean, it sounds crazy to be planning this far in ahead, but you know, we don't know what's happening with the Pound Ridge Car Show or other Parks and Recreation events. Huge soccer tournaments. I don't know whether they'll take place in person or not. Who knows? But I think Cindy's right. If we can get a date on the town calendar, even though it's tentative. I think it behooves us by next month to take a look at that. Love to hear from some of the younger moms. Do you think parents will be willing? I mean, who knows? It's, it's six and a half months away. Who knows if kids will feel comfortable coming to an event like that or families, I should say. Jen or Melissa, any, any thoughts on that? Do you think vaccines are widely distributed? They'll, they'll again come out and spend money?
I mean, I would add that I believe families are ready. I, I know my family's ready. We, you know, took this extended vacation. And, and come summer, come fall, when sports are out and about and children are playing sports. I'm, I'm pretty confident families will be willing to attend and volunteer for the library fair.
Excellent, okay.
I, I think that it really depends on what happens with schools. I think schools are going to dictate how comfortable people are. So if schools, if it looks like schools are going to be closer to normal. Then perhaps we will have that pent-up volunteerism that we're hoping for. But I think it, right now, I, I would say it's too soon to, to make that determination.
Okay, that's fair. So we will revisit the fair issue and at least try by next meeting to get a date on the calendar. Does that sound good? Now, does anybody have any other goal that they would like to put forward for consideration? Not that this is the last time we have to discuss that. Would you all give it some thought over the next month?
Well, Nancy, I would just, that we can continue donor cultivation.
Absolutely. That can remain on the list.
Was effective and we had a lot of board member participation and sending thank you notes or doing some outreach. And I, I think it, as you pointed out, it made a difference in our overall fundraising success. So I would put that on the list.
Fantastic donations. I mean, even historic hamlet, somebody came forward at the end, gave twenty-five hundred dollars because they'd enjoyed that event so much. Other donations of ten thousand and the thirty thousand, you know, it, it's just, I, I'm flawed by how much this community has supported the library during the tough times. When the community is having tough times too. Okay, so I will be quiet and ask you to think about goals and the fair and we will discuss that next week. Can we move on to committee reports? Fundraising has a lot to say. Elena?
I do.
Well, how about a wine update?
Yes, exactly. So we're doing our virtual wine tasting this Saturday night. Nancy and I, we're going to meet tomorrow, put the bags together. We have all the, all the goodies. We'll assemble those and how many have we sold Cindy? Fifteen, sixteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen. That's pretty good. So if anybody was thinking about doing it, there's room or, you know, letting your friends know.
Well, the eighteen, eighteen is eighteen couples, right?
Yeah, like eighteen packages. I mean, you know, how many bottles? You get three bottles, so.
Oh, okay.
It could be an individual person tasting. You don't have to drink them all at once and, you know, the whole thing. So we're looking forward to that. You know, I hope it goes well. Andy has been in touch with John and John seems very excited about it and it should be fun.
Cindy did a little rehearsal with Andrew.
Nope, that's coming tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, tomorrow's a big day. We'll assemble.
You may see them if you're, if you're here at five thirty.
If anybody would like to stop by, I think we have it covered, but it's between five and six and it's just an hour. We'll, we'll be over there.
I think, I think we got it. I think we got it. So, so that'll be fun. So we'll see how this goes, you know.
Any trustees, if you want to sign up, if you're so moved, please feel free to take those extra places. We, we need. We, we'd love to fill it up is all I'm saying.
It, it will also go out in our e-blist that comes out every Thursday, one more time tomorrow.
One more time, okay, yeah.
Maybe there'll be one or two more people.
Yeah, I've been sharing it on Facebook and Instagram and stuff like that. So keep sharing it, people. And the pop-up bakery, one of the.
Have you poured them out yet?
Well, one, one of the bakers had an oven fire, like the oven, anyway, so doesn't have an oven at the moment. So they are in touch and. Possibly they will offer something in March, but we don't know when or what yet. They're kind of working things out. Due to major technical difficulties in a kitchen. But I, you know, I said, that's the beauty of a pop-up. It pops up when it pops up, you know, it's flexible and, yes, Peter.
I saw you asked for extra bakers or they were looking for bakers. In any case, if they want somebody to make short bread like I usually do. I'll be happy to make ten for the next occasion.
That's, that's perfect. That's great. I will, I will mention it to Allison who has a working oven. And, and I'll have her get in touch with you. Email is the best.
Sure.
Okay, and Veronica, you sent me the name of the baker that bakes bread and stuff. So I've, I've mentioned that to them. So I think with this oven disaster, they kind of are. Well, they, they have not reached out to other people yet, but I will definitely mention, yeah.
You know, especially around the holidays, which is such a hectic time. Even if we push it off to Easter Passover, you know, that's fine.
Exactly, yeah.
Bring like or.
Yes, I think that's.
But they've been heroic and I certainly wouldn't put more pressure on.
Exactly. That's why I'm letting them kind of, you know, steer the ship. I'm not going to tell them what to do.
Absolutely. And I wrote them personal thanks because they went out of their way at the holidays for us.
Melissa?
Oh, I just had a question, a fundraising idea. I'm curious if the pop-up bakery bakers would be interested in maybe hosting a baking class or cooking class? You know, not all of us are skilled bakers as they are and they produce such beautiful pieces. Just maybe an idea to toss around their way if they were interested in providing a class and.
That's a very good idea and I think, I know Amy months and months ago on her Instagram, I think she did do a little Instagram live at one point. Baking a key lime pie, you know, she was just testing it out. So I, yeah, I think that's a great idea, like a. Yeah.
Have the ingredients prepackaged, pick up at the library and, and hike up the price so that it's also a fundraiser to the library.
That's a fun idea.
Great idea. Yeah, if they'd be willing to do it. And doesn't one of them have the kitchen set up with the overhead camera?
She, maybe at some point, I think now, yeah. The oven might be turning into a whole kitchen reno thing, so it might eventually get there.
Kitchen out of it.
Exactly, exactly. I think that's basically it.
Uh, other fundraising ideas, my well is running dry. I sent you all, you may not have had time to see it. A little correspondence I've had with a mentalist mind reader. I have a friend who saw this guy in person and said he was pretty good. And I noticed that he shifted to Zoom programming where he charges for it. I don't know. I'm, I'm struggling here. I'm kind of tapped out.
Well, I have a, much harder. Idea to toss out for Nancy and Elena and our fundraising committee. I would like to maybe do a trial or resurrect the idea of offering a program naming opportunity. For our virtual programs. And this might appeal to a major donor or a business. We talked about it. But instead of them naming a live program, they're simply naming a virtual program. So for example, we have the teen book club. So if a donor was interested, maybe they could make a two hundred dollar contribution and for that two hundred dollar contribution. They get to name that teen program, virtual teen program for a year. So it could be named after a child, a grandchild, maybe their family name, but it would be the Diane and Clyde Brownstone Teen Book Club for twenty-twenty-one. And it's something that we could put out in an email blast, something we could post to our website. And maybe even do a little bit of outreach to some of our major donors. Like if you have a relationship with someone who's given. Like if you have a relationship with someone who's given, let's say, two hundred fifty dollars or more, someone you know, you might want to see if you could tickle their interest a little bit and would they be interested in a naming opportunity? Now, obviously, we're kind of, we've stepped into 2021, so it might be something that we launch mid-year. Or they, we, we just time it as a one-year plan from whenever April of 2021 until March of 2022.
No, it's not a bad idea. And I think that you, you really piqued my interest with naming it after a grandchild. I'm thinking of the children's story hour. You know, I could see a grandpa or grandma or a couple wanting to name that in honor of a child who lives here and maybe who even attends the story hours. That would be kind of cool. That's not a bad idea. I think we can play with that. But any, anything else? And I like it because it's no work, or very little work. Anybody else peep your eye out for creative Zoom experiences that you've enjoyed through other nonprofits? I will do the same. It's getting, it's getting, it's getting a little difficult to find new and innovative programming opportunities. And do look into the Tom Kennedy, see what you think, maybe watch some of his videos. I've seen some of his videos. He is pretty astounding. And I participated in a program like that with my family. It was not Tom. It was another guy who charges a fortune. Anyhow, so moving on.
I, I, for the past couple of months, I've been quietly working on another historic hamlet hunt. If libraries up to doing it, I don't know. It's, but I've, I've got, I've, you know, done the route and I've talked to Maureen Cole and Peter knows about it. I told her. But I think it's, you know, it's very much along the same lines. I think I'm simplifying a couple of things. And the one thing that started it all was, I don't know if you remember, but the man that lives in the, the big yellow square house in Golden's Bridge had offered a tour. So, you know, we thought, even if it's just a tour of the grounds, there, you know, the grounds there are spectacular, so the hunt is just in three hamlets, so it's not the extensive driving of the last hunt. But it's, and it's a little greener. It involves some preserves and lakes and parks. So, but anyway, it's something where I'm at a point now where, you know, we could conceivably do it as a spring activity or if we don't do the library fair, we could do it in the fall again. But it's, you know, I, I think I can reasonably say that we could have it all together. I won't give Caitlin nervous breakdown this year because I've actually started very early and I've been working on it, so you know, it's something that we can keep in mind to do again.
Bless your heart. You must be a glutton for punishment.
It was fun and people really did enjoy.
Yet. No, I love, I love the idea of actually going into a home. And I know Jay had been very big on including perhaps some gardens, some of the lovelier gardens in our town. And that could be an element of it. And yeah, we'll see.
I think for this year, I, I wouldn't even try to go inside his house as much as I'd love to see it. I've seen pictures. But, you know, I think it would be wonderful, a wonderful opportunity for people to explore his grounds. There's all kinds of historic things all over, plus beautiful gardens. So it would be nice.
Always, always remember to speak to Gary too. He's going nuts over there on his property and I bet he can't wait to show it off. And he's always
Maybe by June or something, he'd be ready for a tour. You tell us the good garden months, Jay. I don't know.
Yeah, spring, spring is April, May, June, yeah.
Gary, Gary and Priscilla said that their gardens are best in September. Like end of the summer is what he, last time when I chatted with him.
All right.
So I guess it depends.
That could be even a whole nother event. You know, I don't know what he's doing.
Well, we'll hit him up again, but
But anyway, this, I just wanted to let you know, this is a possible fundraiser for 2020.
Okay, let's think about timing on that. Because if we do do the library fair, I'd, I'd hate to put that in September as well. Excellent. And then the, the only other thing was Library Giving Day, which is April seventh. We did participate last year. Cindy would know more about it than I do. It's basically an online and e-blast sort of a reminder that today is National Library Giving Day. And we would reach out to some of our donors as well as the regular e-blast list. This does not involve much work for the trustees. Am I right about that, Cindy?
Yes, that's true. I just wanted to vote of confidence that we're willing to, to do it again. You know, the last time it was, I, I, I want to say it was in March last time or, or maybe the very beginning of April. And we were, as you recall, we were a little apprehensive about asking for money at that time. But I think it did bring in five, six thousand dollars and we were gratified. So, and I don't, really don't think it cost us anything to do it.
Okay.
You know, Liz could adapt what we did last year. If she needs any help from any trustees, she'll get in touch with us.
Linda is very good at communicating. I'm volunteering you, Linda, but maybe if she could look at the materials.
Sure, yeah, from last year, yeah.
You might have some good suggestions, persuasive copy or something. Excellent. Okay. Is that it for you, Elena? Nothing else from fundraising?
No, not that I know of.
Moving on to building and grounds. Jay, did you want to say anything?
Just two minutes maybe about the Sculpture Garden. I sent out an email which came from the email Mario Cuomo sends out on the COVID website. And New York State has launched, New York pops up, an initiative to accelerate the revival of culture and arts. So it looks like the state is doing a lot along these lines because the artists are a suffering group right now. So I really want to, I, I don't know if we could become part of something a little more formal with that, but I, I, I think there's a lot of room for this Sculpture Garden to do something very successful, because as you realize, not only to create interest to the library, but to sell the pieces with some of the proceeds going towards the library. So I'm going to look more into that. And if anybody else has any ideas, the artists are still very gung ho about it. There are a lot of, actually, there is one other thing. It's not quite building and grounds, but I have a starving artist friend and I asked her to start doing sketches of some buildings in town. She doesn't live in town. But I thought we could use them as thank you cards. So here's one example. If I put it up, can you see this? You're not going to be able to see it.
Yes, we can
Recognize it?
Yes, very nice.
It's the library. So we can make those into cards and we can use those as thank you cards if you'd like. I asked to do the library, the townhouse in Honitu to start off with. And I'm just taking care of her end of it. And I think it's a cute little idea. So, yeah, other than that, with building and grounds, I don't, I don't think, does anyone else from building grounds have anything to say? We don't really have too much going on right now.
Nope, everything's covered with snow.
Other than just keeping an eye on things and Cindy, don't hesitate to call us if anything goes awry.
Yeah, well, you know, the Bluestone walkways don't like that salt, you know, and there's a lot of, so they're all beginning to lift a little bit, but there's nothing you can really do about that.
No, but if there is anything you think of, let us know. We're trying to set up a rotation, so someone comes by at least every week and checks things. I, I know that Andrew does that probably on his own most of the time anyway, but it is good. Because in this type of weather, you never know what could happen and it could happen quickly. So that's my concern.
I go by every weekend.
For this, I mean, for Joel, for the sign replacement, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know where he is with stuff. You know, he's five balls in the air. But it's, he does it in his shop at Honitu. He does the signs there. And it's nice that they're taking care of that for us. I appreciate it. What, what should we do with the old sign? Anyone want that? Can we use that?
It is, it is literally, if you poke your fingers through it, you could put your finger through the wood.
Okay.
Really rough.
We're going to just toss it. If anyone would want it, let us know.
Okay, very good. Anything from nominating, Jim? No? Or policy? I don't think we have any new policies on the table. Personnel and Finance Committee will be brought into the pension fund when it's time to choose a new plan. So we don't need anything right now. Would anyone like, from the public, like to make a comment? Any old business? I don't think so. I'm sorry, Andrew, were you going to say something? You were bringing something up. Thank you for looking in on our grounds.
I was just saying, I just swing by there every weekend. But I was going to ask Jay if he got to the bottom of those yellow ribbons.
On the trees?
Oh, no. All I can think of, Andrew, is I've mentioned it to the trustees, more importantly, to the Building and Grounds Committee about how we'd like to do something in that area. I meant to mention it to Joel Head of Maintenance, Peter Ripinger and Highway, because I don't want to step on their toes, and Gary. So somebody may have taken the initiative on our behalf to do something about it. But I, and I'm not playing dumb here. I really don't know. I really don't know. But one time in the past, a tree that needed to be taken down was taken down. And I don't know where the chain of authority went on that, but I'll ask Joel and I'll ask Peter.
I, I just want to make sure we're not left with the bill for that. Because that other tree that came down, all of the sudden I got a bill, which I knew nothing about until I got the bill.
Right. Well, I don't know if we still got to the bottom of that one, but I
Because it's not our property.
Right, right. Absolutely. It's, it's the town property. I'm in no position to authorize it. I just mentioned to Peter and Joel, Gary and the Building and Grounds, what we'd like to do in that area. That's it. That's all I've ever said about it. I have a very good relationship with all those people and maybe someone's taken the initiative.
Well, what is it that we want to do with that area?
Just kind of clear it up a little bit and maybe extend our grounds over there and
Right, again, I need to remind you, it's not our property in terms of insurance and all of that stuff. We're, you know, we're not covered over there.
I spoke, and I understand that. I spoke to Joel, I spoke to Peter, I spoke to Peter Parsons. So I spoke to anyone who has any authority over it. And it seems to be okay. And we just kind of, we started by cleaning up a mess that's there, a lot of invasives and things like that. Trying to make it look a little nicer and everyone seems to be on board with that. And then extend some of the, some of the grounds to hopefully cut down on the maintenance, not increase the maintenance of it and make it look nicer. So a more beautification, so to speak. So nobody is objected to anything and nobody's told me I'm not, I'm not doing anything I shouldn't be doing. But you're right though, Cindy, the, the yard of the, the boundary of the library is basically the back wall of the library, right? Not even that turnaround, not the parking lot even.
That's right.
But we have to be aware of that and we are. Just like when we take care of the junipers, it's really town property, but we're trying to make the place look nicer. I spoke to Peter Ripinger. He understands that a lot of people aren't crazy about the way the highway building looks. But if we can do something to make it look nicer, because it's from the library that you look at that building, well, maybe we'll do something. And for Andrew knows this.
I'm sorry.
From, from, from that, from that wooded area, Andrew, as you know, you get beautiful views of that lake, right? Andrew?
No comment. It's come to my house to see.
I'm just laughing because when we renovated, that's why I bought the shades that were translucent that we can't see. When, when they're down, we can't see the ugly building. I bought those on purpose.
But Jay, I know spent a lot of time trimming back there and Kevin too, right? You did a lot of work.
A number, a number of us did. It, it, it's starting to look, you know, might as well make something out of it.
Right, right. I agree. And we appreciate that. Thank you, Jay. All right, is there any new business? No. Okay, can I, our, our next board meeting will be March tenth via Zoom, seven thirty. And I assume we can still continue on Zoom, right, Cindy?
Yes, the, the governor keeps on extending it a month at a time.
Okay, so we're good.
Yeah, we're covered.
Yes. Did you have something you wanted to say, Linda? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Oh, she's just saying goodbye? All right, so motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Yes. Peter Rose, all in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.